We work this job full-time, but it's not a full-time job as it relates to the budget that breaks out. So we're putting a lot of sweat equity and I heard some folks say like, "We're councilors?" I'm in the trenches every single day with folks. I'm at meetings, on streets, involved in a whole myriad of issues you fill in the blank. So I feel like my expectations have been beyond reasonable. So to have something dropped on us, you know, 2:30 this afternoon is like, that's how we're aged, why not? Because I know that I really held myself to a standard to give you deliberation within 24 hours. And that's what I committed to you in that public meeting. And the reciprocation is like, I mean, how would you feel?
I'm not very disinterested in your comments.
So kind of shift taking, I'm sorry, I'm starting to get fired up. But just like what Council Tom Mucci had said, I mean, excuse me, Council of Lords, I made that suggestion to Planner Fatsy when we spoke in between that nine-day period that we were going to think we could all interact was, hey, you know what? I've had a great success story, a great run with that 24-hour offline, it was something that supported Rich. Right? Because like, and it's fine, if I hear the phone ring at 1:00 in the morning, I'll reach over and check it out. But the reality is like, they, folks should have a direct dial into someone that's staffing that phone because we're at a climactic point in the city's history. There's good, there's change, there's going to be disruption, there's going to be more change. So to not be able to get out in front and address those issues, I mean, you have a runway. You're asking for a budget to fund that runway. We just want to understand what's on the runway. So as I transitioned to that and I talked to Planner Fatsy about those Clerk committees, you know, I asked him, and we played phone tag yesterday, you know, he was out of the office and I completely get that, but the goal of this meeting is to have deliberation, have dialogue, and hopefully give you guys some takeaways from here and maybe what a takeaway is. And short form, engage with some of these communication consultants and say, hey, can you put a pen to paper, because these city councilors who come here and work really hard and go through, you know, $400-plus million worth of expenditures, they want a clear concise idea as to what you're going to need to do and how you're going to implement change and effectiveness to their area, right? So the Clerk Committee sounds like a pretty good idea. I asked him for breakdown of both roles and responsibilities. I understand and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve Crucial, who many of us have experienced with the Street Works, and I found him to be, you know, valuable. But here's my, here's my, I just, I've been so clear on this from the beginning and I'm just behind like after what I just heard, I can't, I'm not very, I'm not embracing the future as to what this, what this may and hopefully be not look like. We're going to be investing in a parking garage. We're going to be essentially taking spaces offline, albeit temporarily or whatever you want to frame, spaces are coming offline. Do you know what I represent? I represent the peripheral of downtown along with Ward 5, Ward 1, Ward 2, and several other wards that touch that downtown. So I really, really, really need to understand how are we going to mitigate the outpouring of parking going into that neighborhood. Again, I understand change, I understand this is a fluid document, I understand, you know, the across, I understand everything that wasn't dropped on my yesterday 2:30. What I don't understand is how are we going to engage with those residents? Because that is, you know it, and I actually live in the area, so I tend to be in the impact zone, but if I'm on like Vigolo Street, or Millis Stiles Street, or 88 Allen Street, or in that area in the Sweeney's, I didn't, you know, I live where I live, but I didn't sign up for basically my street to help the park. So what's the plan?
We have two phases for the planning, Councilor. And we will implement the measures that we've talked about in terms of strict parking enforcement. We will reach out to all of those residents on those streets to notify them. The immediate displacement of vehicles can be absorbed by other lots that we have on the other side of the city on the Ross side. It's really sort of a reverse course, if you will, of the process we implemented successfully, I believe, last year when we took down the Ross garage and we had to move a lot of those vehicles over to the Hancock lot, brought it into near capacity before we implement the major phase of displacing spaces. We will reach out to that community, we will go door-to-door, we will do flyers. I'm sorry, Councilor Forrest, I had the impression that Mr. Russo's weekly report did appear on the city's webpage. I may be mistaken because he, he was not working during the non-construction season. He just resumed and it's possible that he did not put these most recent weekly updates on the website.
Just wanted to point out during, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. So I just want to be clear, right? If we get a PDF flyer, okay, open this attachment, read the information. I want it to be streamlined on the city website. QuincyA.D.R.C.A. slash downtown, right? Very easily found, everyone can find it, say, "Jeez, what's happening?" At your convenience, not, "Where's the PDF, is that this week, when's the last one?" Very simple. And I think what's really important to understand is who your audience is you're communicating to. So there's business owners who function in downtown daily. Then there's the Ward 1 residents, Ward 2 residents, Ward 5 residents who live a buddy there. And you know what, when the YMCA is under construction and the noise that made through the neighborhood, my phone is ringing, right? And those, those residences are ranted, why is nobody there to be here? And the people that are driving through downtown, what's happening today? I think we need, people shouldn't just be downtowns under construction. I mean, the traffic in, on Handcart Street, back and up through Denex Street, how long is it until you get through the light? It's one of the biggest frustrations we're hearing from people. So we need to be doing our part, pushing up the content, what's happening in a very clear and concise manner that people know where to find it, not on, hey, you're not on distribution list to get this flyer, you have to open the PDF. You know, it's not just one email, one place, really, it's simple stuff. And you know, it's something that as a city councilor, I'm constantly going to my board and probably start going, load up all the documentation, make it easily accessible to those that want to know it, read it down, download it and everything, good for them. That's, that's what we're doing around as well, right? But we want this information to be available to people, understanding who the audiences are, whether you're a business owner, everyone deserves rights to that information, not just, you know, if you're not willing to get to your, to you into your business, of course, you need timely information, but there needs to be some context too, that it's the person traveling the business, that business owner, how are they expected to be communicating it out to everybody, right? It's an issue, I think we can do, I know, content, we can do better about it. We've worked with other projects that we've had great successes in doing this. And in fact, the Street Works was before, this was very much originally a private plan. There's a lot of different moving pieces happening in our downtown area in particular. Whether they're private, whether they're private, the taxpayer, the homeowner, the business owner, they don't know, they just see activity happening. And it's not for them to distinguish, oh, it's not the city's responsibility. The same people will tell you the cities don't build condos, we're not building condos in development, that's we permit condos, but understand who the audience is and what their perceptions are and the information that they need to know. Thank you.
I absolutely agree, Councilor. We can do better, we should do better, we will do better. In referencing Mr. Russo's flyer, it has to be multiple forms of communication. That's just one of them.
The content for Mr. Russo's flyer is always very informative and he does a great job of it, that's one puzzle piece, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So the rest of the puzzle piece is what's happening in the project. And he does reference the private projects, what's happening with the West of Chestnut project, but understand these private projects also have public impacts. When West of Chestnut was under construction, the entire sidewalk on Handcart Street was shut down with construction, let's say, right? So just because it's a private project doesn't do it off the top. We have like Council Call reference. This district is a geographic area for a lot of the activity happening and, you know, the MDT, the center projects coming on down, it's going to be out of information that people can understand when they want to, you know, if they're looking at what they need to plan for their day, this is not for the homeowner. The trade law is going to be keeping the cars from infiltrating those neighborhoods and that's definitely something we're looking to hear more on because, you know, it's a, it's a problem already, it's an existing, one of our main problems, but in particular when this happens, it's something that's very much forefront of radar, myself, Council Call, Council of Lords, who all represent the periphery area.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, I say this all the time, and I really try to practice it as a board councilor, don't assume we are, assume that nobody knows nothing. That's a great starting point for communication strategy. And I heard it shared here this morning, I do, you know, email distribution, social media, and tweeting, and all that stuff. But understand, I represent a very large senior population, where a lot of those folks, that's not how they communicate. And a lot of those folks live in those areas around the peripheral of downtown. So they're going to need, you know, an alternative communication strategy. And this is, I guess what you're hearing is, you know, bird's eye view of the board council. And I get it, you know, you guys answer to the administration, answer to the same people. Like literally, this is what we do. We're board councilors, we sign up and represent the district, day in and day out. And what helps me is not to sit and say, well, you know, I think it's this street and this street and this street. I will get in my car and I will drive over to a neighborhood and I'll walk around and say, well, you know what, I thought it was this, this, and this, but now I can see it, I can feel it, I can smell it, I can touch it. It's actually this, 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 plus these three others. So, you know, giddy up, quite honestly, just doesn't sound like there's a lot of meat involved, there's some work to do there. Is there a question?
Yes, sir.
And this Clerk of the Works Committee, is that one of the Clerk of Works?
Clerk of Works, yes.
I understand he'll be the construction manager, but I also understand along with the Works and Mr. Fatsy's mouth, he's also going to take, kind of act as a conduit to the neighborhoods, like what's, what's kind of the thought there?
Well, the thought there was that actually some of the outreach folks who in the past have reported things to the City Hall would be closer to the community and have more instant access to information about construction activities if they were affiliated with the Clerk of Works. My initial concern, to be honest with you, when I proposed the creation of this position was we were really undergoing major construction and that we need, and it's certainly not me nor is it any of the people within the administration who have other responsibilities, have the capacity to properly supervise complex construction in the field with the two contractors, at least two contractors, those who are building the two projects as well as the garage, that that had to be a person who had significant experience in overseeing and managing construction projects, who had, has a keen eye for cost issues, for logistical issues, phasing issues, all of the issues that go along with constructing complicated structures. And that was the principal purpose that I recommended with the creation of that position. We also believe that making certain that folks such as Tom Russo are closely connected to that person, because there is considerable amount of infrastructure activity going on, that given his experience with this project, Mr. Crucial has prior experience with it. I did not know Mr. Crucial, I didn't know him at all, but his name was recommended by a number of folks who have worked with him whom the Street Works processes. But someone like Mr. Crucial was exactly the type of person I thought was critical to ensuring the success of these two projects and the associated public works projects that go along with it when we get into serious construction.
I mean, make no mistake, I'm not here to curse the darkness, I'm really here to try to, you know, light a candle, be part of the solution, quite honestly. And, you know, I'm a board councilor that's always proud of myself of like being there for people and, you know, I'm not just going to sit here and throw up criticism like, I insert myself in this too, you know, I play a role in this, right? I mean, I want to communicate with my people and I want everyone to be on the same page, crystal clear, here's what's coming, here's how it's coming, here's what you can do, here's more importantly, what the city can do. So I'm not coming up here with these suggestions, saying, "Do my job," not at all. I'm saying, "Help me, help you, put some resources around it." You talked about teamwork, like, "Let's see, let's see, I'm in, I want to be on the team." That's, that's, that's my kind of.
I absolutely understand the spirit of your commentary.
And we understand too that there is, you know, with change brings disruption, right? Anybody that does a project in their home realizes that it's, it's tough and terrible while it's going on, but hopefully, you know, the output's a lot better. But what's, what's always been helpful for me in those little things that I've done in my own house is when, you know, the contractor and the interested party interact. That's all, so, Councilor DeMong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we're talking a little bit more about construction, I think this would be an appropriate time to talk a little bit about the mitigation and the transfer of when this construction goes on with parking in the downtown. And you know, if this passes and we begin to allocate more funding for this garage multi-level, will the garage space across the street in that, in that parking lot be available for the people that are going to the Quincy Courthouse and the buddy restaurants and storefronts and leasing businesses that are in the downtown? Where is everybody going to park? Councilor, initially, as we have displacement and kind of phasing displacement, they will be going, as I mentioned, over to the Ross side where we present that capacity. We also made arrangements actually a year ago where we didn't need to use it because we know that nighttime parking is a critical issue, particularly for the restaurants that we mentioned here. We entered into a lease with the Courthouse so that that lot, and it's all 200 spaces, would be available for nighttime parking to find them in the process of putting signs out, to notify the public of that. We're talking with some of the business owners to provide them communications that they could put on their own business website to notify potential patrons, customers, that the Rids free parking and it is free, it goes through the night until seven in the fall of the morning, and it's also available on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. And so we are looking further. The major impact will occur six months from now, first before the wave is back for the holiday season, when, over the course of the summer, we'll displace 150 vehicles. And then in the beginning of next year, could be late January or thereabouts, we will need to close the remainder of the lot. This place is 292 vehicles. We're in the process of devising a plan that will include some prospective mitigation measures that may include assistance with valet, restriking some of the lots that are on the Ross side to accommodate more vehicles, carving out from some areas new spaces as we did with the small lot from many notice at the intersection of Hancock and Parkway. There's 92 spaces there. Cottington Building, obviously, building, city owners and controls. Will accommodate approximately 18 vehicles, of course, that's evening and weekends only. And we are in the process of speaking with other private parties to see whether or not some of their capacity that's unused, particularly in the evening, might be available. So we're, we're looking at a variety of options to mitigate the displacement of parking that will occur for the ultimate closure of the lot and the phase, you know, before that, this summer.
So what you're trying to say, after 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM, you're going to make available some free parking for the patrons going to restaurants and whatever the case may be, where you're willing to open up Cottington, that parking lot with, you know, people that don't go over the rules and regulations of how, you know, parking, don't use the establishments? There'll be no overnight parking there, allow most lots or?
While our license with the Courthouse, for example, does allow overnight parking, and we do understand that for years, even the planning of parking, people have parked overnight in that lot, that's one of the issues we're looking at. We believe that the city is obligated to have personnel on site during the parking hours. I think we'd be inclined, you know, not to technically park overnight there. So that's an issue, that's another issue, I guess, I would characterize it, that we need to work out with the residents of that parking lot.
The scene lot that we took over and restructured in front of Clive Place Condos, I guess I could say, we, what is our relationship with them right now on what we're going to do with that, you know, that area that's coming to parking spots right there?
There's close to 100 parking spaces there. It's underutilized, presently has been underutilized since we entered into a license agreement down a year ago. We just actually renewed that license for another year, it's renewable for a period of years. We made it clear that we will leave it for a number of years as an interim parking facility while this construction activity goes on.
The construction phase, the construction workers, where are they going to park?
We're going to be working with the contractors to identify remote locations for those construction workers because, as you know, they take up spaces that right now that we have premium for residents and businesses and visitors to downtown area.
So we basically have a two-phase. We basically have a daytime parking, people that are using the Courthouse, still using the downtown, that'll be like a one phase, and then there'll be that second phase where it's after hours, from 5:00, the businesses kind of shut down. That's why I say, you know, businesses like Council Tom Mucci has this lot for over there, it's building, they kind of shut down, the restaurants still continue to go. So they'll be in two phases here, is that what you're looking to do?
Yes.
On top of that, construction, it's construction time. Are they going to be working two hours of construction time? Is that going to conflict with, you know, Friday nights, Saturday nights, Saturday days? Are we going to have unlimited construction on those days or are we going to, how is that looking at this phase? I know we're looking step further, but this is something I think we need to talk about now.
Well, it's perfectly appropriate. We have not set those times, we're not looking, we are looking at expedited construction as efficiently as, as we can execute that construction.
I'm sorry, I can't, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor DeMong, through your, like, the chair, through the Certificate of Consistency process, which is the review of these private projects by the Planning Board, we will approve a construction management plan. And we have for the LDC project, which was approved last month. And we're currently putting the touches on a construction management plan for the Chestnut Place departments. In there, it is a living guidance, and that's very important because not all the issues are going to be known, they're going to be, they're going to occur as timing and sequencing ramps up for this construction. The, so the Planning Board's decision for both the LDC departments and for the Chestnut Place departments will direct both parties to coordinate with this Department of Works on all construction activities that will be occurring on that lot. As far as timing, we typically, for every Planning Board case, hold that from daylight hours during the week as well as Saturdays, and then sign off by the chief of police on Sunday work, so Sunday is prohibited. I would say that there is, so that is prescribed in the COC decisions, but I can't ignore from time to time the need for night work or extended hours for special situations. For example, if work needs to occur in Handcart Street, that's a road that we may want have work done at night so as to not disrupt the traffic well during the day. Those decisions would be made, funnel through the Clerk of Works for the Handcart Lot as those issues come up.
One thing I want to make sure that we do here at the city is provide for our restaurant patrons and people that want to use the downtown. And that's, that's kind of our center point right now is our restaurant establishments. I think we should be taking a step further on marketing, allowing these parking areas to be sure that the city of Quincy and the other side, South Shore, citizens know that we have these type of mitigation concerns. I know an establishment like Ella Restaurant went through the construction phase, it continues to go through it, but still thrives with the fact that they've been able to get the word out, marketing-wise, and we're hot. We need to continue to do that as we go into this construction phase. We want to make sure that these businesses and these downtown restaurants are doing well and we need to provide that service as we do all this construction because it's not going to just be the downtown, we're going to have the Quincy Center Garage coming down in the same round timeframe. There's just going to be so many things going on, I don't want to, you know, get the word out there that the citizens think, oh, there's so much construction, I can't even go over to downtown to get burger at Kate's Burger or West of Chestnut Fuji yet. We've got to be able to make the experiments for the citizens of the city and not dwindle on that because of all this construction. Do we have a phase of what we're going to, is there anybody in charge of that, or that mitigation of making sure that we're still running the city and allowing these restaurants to be open?
Well, again, sort of back to my earlier testimony, that was more geared towards that public relations, is trying to advocate and market the existing businesses to the wider market area. And also, and to your point, you know, Quincy Center holds, or is host of a lot of events, whether it's parade, parades, replays, ceremonies. We've always tried to have sensitivity to construction activities and prohibiting those at the time or right around a lot of the public events that do occur in our downtown.
Thank you for your answers, thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Long as she yelled "You're out!"
I know, thank you. So I appreciate Councilor DeMong's concern about the restaurants, making sure the place stay in business. I share that concern, but I'm also concerned about the thousands of employees that we have frequent to downtown, the customers who frequent the downtown during business hours, the scores of businesses that are open up, that are open in the downtown during business hours. I haven't, I didn't hear anything about what the Plan would, I heard, you talked a lot about overnight, using satellite lots. What's the plan for the day?
The plan for the day is to look at shifting those 292 additional spaces that are coming offline over to the Ross side and looking at reentering some of those lots to maximize spaces. And it may require actually activity that would include, none of them on, say, valeting, but having not self-parking, but regulated parking by the tenants who are there to maximize the, you know, spaces than to, to use, you know, especially not in the airport or the post office square garage, for example. They are able to maximize. Um, they are able to maximize X number of additional spaces by having, uh, attendants, um, people park their car, the attendants are there, they need to check their keys. Those are some of the options we're gonna look at. We are also talking with some of the other, uh, private, uh, facilities in, uh, the downtown, um, to gauge what their, um, extra capacity is. Because some of them, such as President's Place, does have extra capacity during the day, um, and that would be a suitable location, uh, for, uh, some of the employees.
How much capacity does President's Place have?
Uh, the estimate that we've seen is a hundred during the day and, and I believe a hundred twenty-five during the evening.
All right, I'm just focused on the during the day, I'm not too worried about during the evening, I can't be able to find sufficient spaces that are around and cover that, so. So you lose three hundred spaces during the day, um, you can make up a hundred at President's Place, not the easiest place to get, you know, attention, get spaces, you get spaces. Where are the other two hundred spaces during the day and come from?
Well, we've identified in a variety of places, uh, a total of thirteen hundred spaces. Uh, some of them are, uh, are street spaces, uh, and, uh, the rest of them fall, uh, into, uh, categories such as the Ross lot, the casino lot, um, and, uh, the Hancock Court lot.
What's that, the Hancock Court lot?
It's, it's, it's only small, uh, a small, uh, lot, it's only twenty spaces, um, the, uh, and I'm just looking at data. Those are the principal ones, uh, that we will be looking at.
Sure, let me just scroll through, you've identified, uh, thirteen hundred unused parking spaces.
Oh, I didn't say, I'm sorry, let me clarify, they're not unused, it's thirteen hundred total. We're looking at what their utilization is now.
Okay.
Okay, and for.
So did you buy, how would we build a garage for thirteen hundred?
Oh, yeah, no, there, there's thirteen hundred spaces in the inventory.
Okay.
Um, each of them have different utilization, for example, casino lot, uh, uh, Counselor DeMong mentioned is.
Nearly full every day. Sorry, at least, at least more than half full every day. So as the side lot of one, uh, Hancock, you know, the old, uh, the Good Health lot was, or is, was. I say, yeah, red, red bull spots in the hand of.
Yeah, yes, those, those lots, soon as we open them up. Oh, you, you're saying they will be full?
Saying they're pretty much full now?
I don't know that they're pretty much full now, we've been taking that inventory and shows that there's mental capacity at both of those lots during the course of the day. Um, the Hancock lot actually, um, seems to benefit, uh, um, in the evening for nearby businesses there. It does have, uh, uh, sometimes it would be near capacity, um, but, uh, and obviously this is, it, the reports I get from the folks in the marketing department, but also anecdotally, you know, I spent a lot of time out watching this kind of thing.
Sure, it doesn't sound like we have a formal, a formalized, fully baked plan on during the day construction.
For full construction, that plan is in the process of being accepted, that's correct.
And when will that be completed?
That will be completed certainly before we, we commence full construction. We're hoping to have it pretty much, uh, formulated by the end of the summer.
Construction will start in the summer?
Uh, well, s- some of the construction will start soon on the, uh, demolition of the, the buildings along Hancock Street, that's part of the L B C and Culvert project. Um, and phasing that project in, a hundred and fifty spaces will be displaced. Um, we believe we have sufficient capacity to absorb the loss of those. The big issue will come beginning of next year, in January, February. Um, that's, that's the, the, the need, the acute need for us to have, uh, a number of options available to accommodate the parking that will be displaced, which will be another two hundred and ninety-two vehicles.
So it's always been contemplated that we need additional parking along the Ross way, right?
That's correct.
So why wouldn't we have built the parking on the Ross way, which is currently nothing, right? I mean, or at least the center street of Ross Garage was, it's currently nothing, sitting on land. Why wouldn't we have built a parking structure there to accommodate future growth there, but also be used to offset the loss of three hundred parking spaces in the Hancock lot when construction starts there?
Well, uh, I really can't comment on that because I wasn't here, um, when that planning process occurred. I do know that there are issues on the Ross lot related to prospective construction of, uh, the New Grace and Bourbon Parkway, Clydeville Street. Um, and, uh, the, uh, I presume it related to whether or not, uh, there was sufficient money in, in the budget to, uh, support a garage. The plan that's been contemplated is that, um, any commercial development that occurs over there is going to have to build garages first, um, and.
Right, so I guess that's what my worry is, because we've already heard that Fox Rock is interested in, uh, utilizing space over there for commercial. And your timeline is of, you know, two years before we displace in the full two hundred and ninety-two parking spaces seems to coincide with what my understanding of their timeline is to, to get things going on the Ross way. That to me seems like a perfect storm with no parking, a construction.
They're, they're aware of this, we, you know, we have immense meetings with them on a weekly basis. So they are aware of virtually everything we do, um, you know, in terms of timeframe. They are aware of the need for us to provide parking on the Ross side first. Um, the decision was made several years ago to focus on the Hancock lot as the first area most likely suitable for development. Of course, there were a host of infrastructure problems on the Ross side, including a deteriorated garage.
Which we've remedied.
Which we've remedied and, and replaced with, um, uh, lot and, and, uh, at great parking.
Okay, well, I'll leave that if anyone else wants to jump on that, uh, about, uh, yield to Counselor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, again, Bill, you know, I know we only got, just got this tonight, I assume, uh, are the people from Desmond here receiving?
They are.
Well, I guess, again, you might be able to answer this because I, hopefully we'll get some time later on at some point. But again, after we've had a chance perhaps to go through this a little bit more. But the one thing is, is that in terms of the Desmond, uh, study that they have, term, in terms of determining parking adequacy, that really is talking about, is going from kind of our, I don't know if they wanna come forward or not, I think, but. They're really talking about present need, um, that parking need that we have, uh, and then again, why, uh, parking adequacy, what like say? And then after construction, why? And with the construction, the garage, et cetera, then why that parking adequacy would be, is that inaccurate statement of what your study would say?
Yes, I'll let Mr. Wilson address that.
That's great, thank you.
Um, in the packets that we have.
Bill, Bill should go to further because it is related to, to the other, to, to some of the issues that we discussed.
Uh, well, first of all, this study, this is an ongoing study for some time.
Right.
Uh, we weren't the kind of, the package to, the past, I've updated it based on some of the recent developments that have changed since we issued that study, uh, two years ago. And, uh, so we've been constantly updating this, but one thing I wanted to point out that might help answer all these questions was presented in the PowerPoint presentation that I've laid a copy. And basically what it shows is all these different benchmarks. And what we did is we did a mixed use analysis to really get a balance for all of the suppliers, what the demand is as all these developments are coming on, online, going off, such as the Ross Garage and some of the other developments. And what this does basically is it boils down to the actual supply and the demand that's gonna happen during these, uh, during these events.
Can I, can I, let me start at that point, because that's just, we're talking about the event. Is that including, I mean, the various methodologies that we, that you applied to try and determine these ratios or whatever? Does that include, again, the actual issues related to, say, people who've heard here tonight, uh, where the construction owners have parked? Is that been built into the demand issues related to, uh, to this study presented, is that contained in?
No, the actual parking and construction workers is not part of the.
Right. So essentially what this goes, this goes from where we are now and where we react to construction essentially is.
And during construction is as well.
Well, how does it, in terms of do, doing construction during construction, but it leaves out the workers, that's kind of a significant impact.
Well, it's not uncommon for a lot of construction projects and the, uh, it's, it's kind of you talk about this too, to actually, uh, must their, um, uh, worker requirements, say. Because when you undergo a construction, a parking truck, there's always, uh, the loss of parking, whether it's a, a community or campus or something of that nature. Uh, and that's a part of the construction plan.
Where do they, where do they bus in the front?
Offside.
Yeah, well, offside there.
Um, I really couldn't see.
Because the other thing I mean, I'm just raised this concern, I think, and again, what I do like is your methodology of trying to, um, kind of more of an integrated view of how parking works, which is always a picture in my life, but. You know, one of the issues that we're gonna be facing is the Wallace and, um, T is, is gonna be down. And, uh, so that, and that parking is basically gonna be closed. There's gonna be incredible demand at the North Quincy Parking Lot, and, and they have a, a new B T A, so you guys can come up with a parking plan for that, but I just see it in the way at this particular point. And so where I get concerned is I think there are certain other variables here that, you know, from the beginning, I remember one of the things we always used to talk about, we need to plan, you know, in, in, in terms of a parking plan, we needed to consider the present need, which you've done a very good job, uh, by Hill here, a very, an excellent job. And then the idea of what, you know, again, what our final need is going to be in relation to, you know, as we, businesses constructed out, which I think there's a great, a good job of that as well. But the other factors, it seems to me that particularly in terms of, uh, of the transition period of growth, um, there's cer- certain things, I mean, that, that I just fear that we're gonna have to cooperate against certain things. Because I mean, if we're, if you're talking about busing in, and you talk about busing in from Weymouth or Raintry or something like Quincy right now, I mean, it, it just strikes me as gonna be incredibly, I think, at this point, it's all around the city. But even North Quincy won't be closing down, I mean, Quincy Station won't be closing down, correct? That, that's still the opposite of it. And yet, the demand on Quincy will probably be dramatically increased. So people will, I'm, I'm guessing that there's gonna be some parking within the city. You know, we, we used to have that even in Hancock Lot, right? People were utilizing that in lieu of, of, uh, transit parking, times. Um, have those factors been kind of factored into what could be happening during this transition period? Because I think, I think that's one of the great fears, and I'm not here to have it from everybody, I'm sure the other consultants have as well.
Um, well, I guess to answer your question directly, with regards to the construction, the traffic, or the, the demand for the construction parking, uh, like I said before, this is a common approach that is used. Is to numb out construction parking within the public area, and whether it be a radius, a one mile radius or whatever, uh, two mile radius or three mile radius, uh, that's part of the process, uh, that we have to look at during the construction phase. Uh, it'll be up to the construction manager, uh, to help implement that program along with the, uh, the clerk of works to make sure it's duly enforced, and, uh, a part of the outreach program is to make sure it's enforced. And that's not uncommon, because that's why, uh, go ahead.
Counselor, part of the, the approach that I mentioned is that those are some of the issues that we need to define and refine in our negotiations with the contractor. As, uh, Mr. Wilson mentioned, it's not uncommon for there to be mustered areas, um, in these kinds of projects, uh, I've actually worked with some of those in the past. Um, probably the, the most, uh, famous one here in Quincy, uh, is at Squam Home Park, um, which.
Oh, I agree.
Which was a mustered area for all the construction workers south of, of Boston, nearly eight hundred, um, to construct the, here I am, so the district, and that. So obviously, we're not talking anything of that magnitude, but we are talking about the need for.
Yeah, I, 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 again, I understand that, but I think that, you know, I, I think this stuff's incredibly complex.
Yes.
And if we're authorizing a bond for, for these things, I'm not saying that, um, that, uh, all these things need to be resolved before authorizing the bond.
Exactly.
The bond may provide, you know, some of the resource to be able to like examine some of these things. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that the pattern that's happened, kind of happened here tonight is that when, if we raise a specific issue, that it's kind of, it's not. It's not the sound methodology that's been applied here, is what I'm saying, in terms of trying to really kind of, um, um, capture parking adequacy during that. And, um, you know, I mean, to the extent that this, even if studies expanded to, to be able to really try to get some sense of what the impact is going to be, is, I think it's gonna be important. Because, you know, particularly for, you know, my colleagues or me, I can assure you, forgetting the daylights whacked out above the parking issue, not just downtown, but throughout, the city. It is the single number one concern and issue of voters and citizens right now is that. And so I think to the extent that there's a transition plan, a transition traffic, a park, a parking plan, rather, that's kind of built into this, that can really do some of the sophistication that it's containing, I think, within this. Almost updating this to get, you have that beginning articulation, you have the final, but here's what's gonna have to happen that would determine, you know, um, whether we're building a boat in our basement right now.
That's, that's absolutely correct.
And that's, that is, that is the intent of the plan. And I think it would be critical, you know, as once, as we're going into this, it goes to the depth in terms of approving the garage, that this would be one of the things that, that the construct, so about construction plans would be something that would be really helpful to have, which would be essentially a concrete plan based on kind of a sound methodology that, that, um, you know, can articulate that, what the need is, and, and how that needs to be met.
That is correct.
That's, and again, that's offsite, parking, very aware, and since, again, I know, I think, uh, squandered points are already taken, from what I understand, you know?
One, one squander is already taken, but they're looking for customers, uh, they've installed the.
No, but I mean, the issue again with, with closing the walls and, and.
Oh, yeah.
The construction and the limitation of parking in North Quincy.
Yes.
It's kind of, you know, I'm guessing that they're probably looking over that way to resolve some of those issues.
I, I believe they are.
So, again, I, I just, I just, it's work, but, but again, it's something from the beginning, I remember going all the way back, you know, something, you know, goodness, you started to clearly was that beginning. They, you know, heard the, the transition lead, finding the, the relational parking, uh, plan, but again, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You'd like to speak?
I'll give to you.
I don't play that one.
Okay.
Watching what happens. Um, I, I agree with a lot of the sentiments, uh, that are expressed about parking, it's, it's something that would be very, very challenging, I mean, to be, uh, in terms of plan and, um, but as it relates to duly enforcing parking regulations, as you referenced, uh, again, for me, and, and that raises a reply. Again, it's that balance that I was talking about to the downtown and, and the Aprils. Duly enforcing our parking regulations in the downtown, again, means a grain of unsated services to the downtown at the expense of services. at the expense of services and resources on our neighborhoods. And it's, it's a concern. I wanted to talk, Bill, with you a little bit about the price, okay, the cost of the garage, if we can get into that. Really appreciate this update from the Kennedy, very helpful. So, the policy came back, as long as I can remember, for the garage was, the administration policy, the city policy, was that it would be a shared cost with developers.
Be a shared, I'm sorry?
Shared cost with developers, and that's why the URDP calls for, it specifies that as part of this, the URDP specifies as part of the COC process, there needs to be a parking contribution.
Correct.
Or a contribution to a parking fund or to some sort of shared, that shared allocation of park. So, we have, I understand the, Clive It In Place, that's the condos, right?
Correct.
That's fully self-parking, so they were essentially helping the COC out of the shared parking because they were.
Correct.
They were all self-sufficient, which is great, challenging, can't wait to see how that project drives by every day. Interesting is it's coming along, but. East of Chestnut, West of Chestnut, LBC. I'm aware of the LBC contribution of leasing a certain numbers basis at $150 per month. What is the contribution of East of Chestnut, West of Chestnut into the shared parking?
In, in the garage?
Mm-hmm.
None I'm aware of.
Okay, so again, but our policy was that all the development downtown is going to share in the cost of the parking?
I, I don't know that to be the case in terms of after streetworks. I don't, is that something that's during the streetworks era?
It's still the URDP, and we haven't changed it, that people are going to carry their, carry their parking or contribute.
What, what are you saying, saying that they need to provide for their own parking?
I'm asking you, have they contributed all into the, into a parking fund to help offset the cost of this garage to the taxpayer?
Mr. Stevens, check, who's the keeper of the history here, will be able to answer.
The West of Chestnut contributions for shared parking are the surface spaces that are in the courtyard area between two structures. The parking ratio for the private spaces, I believe, comes in at .57, which is within the urban renewal parking ratio for residential.
So, you're saying they're fully self-sufficient?
I'm saying they need the parking regulations for urban renewal use of .5 spaces per human.
So, are they self-sufficient?
That is not been, I've got, they meet the zoning code as it's laid out in the urban renewal plan.
Okay, and are they self-sufficient in that parking?
That's an answer that the Desmond team will look at as they continue to look at all the parking of existing uses.
So, we don't know whether or not they have more of a parking demand than they're currently meeting? We don't know that at this stage of the game?
That, the task that will be for the parking consultant, that's Project Moose Wolf.
So, it's not, if you think it's, because it's something they're saying will do in the future, do you not think it would have been relevant to the discussion to know that information now? Is that 100% occupied?
Have the, have the team looked at the West of Chestnut part?
And East of Chestnut has not been constructed, no plans have been put forth for that development, so there is no discussion at that point on that part.
Well, it's fully permitted, though. So, they can, they can start construction tomorrow if they want, right?
East, East of Chestnut does not have a certificate of consistency for construction.
How does one obtain a certificate, a certificate of consistency for construction?
They would need to submit it to the planning board for essentially a site plan review of a proposed project. Proposed project has not been submitted for East of Chestnut.
Are there two different COCs? Or are you talking about the same COC for?
East of Chestnut would be adjacent to the existing Quincy Mutual Insurance Building. Apparently, that's a surface parking lot being used by Quincy Mutual.
They have assigned COC, the mayor's assigned COC.
They have their renewal code that was signed by the mayor. They do not have a certificate of consistency issued by the planning board.
Parking guy.
With regards to, so for the West of Chestnut, based on the zoning criteria ratio, they should be self-parking, but in reality, are they exceeding .50 ratio, that's what needs to be determined.
When are we going to figure that out? There are 100% occupancy, they have been, I mean, things have been built, it's, people live there.
But that's based on every other resident either having a car or not having a car.
No, I know, my question is, when are we going to figure that out?
That would probably be part of the next study phase.
The next study phase?
Design phase, yes.
The design phase of the garage, right?
Correct.
Okay. But again, we're coming up with the 730 spaces that we need. You know, we don't know if the biggest residential complex in the downtown area has any need for spaces. Then how can we rely upon the 730 spaces as that's, knowing that that's what we need?
Part, part of what we did during the study that you were provided, actually went out and did car comps on specific days. And it's not known at this time if any of those are the West of Chestnut excess parking.
That makes sense, so you did a count?
Yes.
You counted cars to determine, to fashion determine the need for spaces? You just didn't attribute whether those cars were West of Chestnut, whether they were.
Correct.
You know, prime realtors, whatever it is, right?
Correct.
All right, that makes sense. I'll take them again.